To the regular school board meeting for Rockcastle County Board of Education. It's always great to see some of our students with us. This is the highlight for us. Mr. Bishop, thank you for bringing them in. But the first thing on our agenda tonight is a moment of silent prayer. Let the minutes note for the row call, all board members are present. Item one C is the reading of board team commitments. I'll read that for us tonight. Board team commitments for Rockcastle County schools. To improve our effectiveness, the board team for Rockcastle County schools commits to: Review processes and experiences to identify and direct improvements. Continuously define and work toward long-term goals which serve all students of the district. Make each decision based on facts and the best for all students. Listen to each other and speak freely. Work together, support each other, and not surprise one another. Discuss board deliberations to point of mutually agreeable resolution based on factual information. Support the majority's decision, projecting board unity towards shared goals for continuously improving district-wide student learning. Operate without personal or political agendas. Respect one another, agree to disagree respectfully. Delegate implementation to superintendent and the education team. And to respectfully remind each other of these commitments. Item one D is the election of officers. This has to be done at January meeting of every year. So we need to nominate someone for chair of board.
Nominate.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we also need a vice chair. Nominate.
Second.
Second. I appreciate your, I appreciate that, I think, until we have someone come in here and throw fit, then I may not. Item one E is to develop and approve the twenty-three regular board meeting schedule. It's been discussed for a public record. Make sure everyone notes. I think we're gonna make a recommendation that we move our board meeting to five-thirty instead of six o'clock. And this will be still on Tuesdays, the second Tuesday, at this location. Does anyone on the board disagree with that, or is that a conflict? Everyone's good with that?
Angie, can you get here?
Yeah, five-thirty, I think I can do it.
Do you need a motion?
I need a motion for that recommendation.
Leave that for that recommendation.
All in favor? Okay, the next thing on our agenda is to adopt the agenda. We need to make an amendment to this. Item five B is to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four draft budget. It just so happens that the MUNIS system has been down, so we are gonna strike that from our agenda tonight. We are gonna come back at a later date at a special call board meeting, and I think, Ms. Jenny, we're gonna add that to the...
You have a draft of the draft in your folder, the final version of the state. We've been down statewide for most of the day today, so.
So we are gonna remove that from our agenda.
Which one left out?
That is five B. I don't think so, not that much. They can do that and the other. With that amendment, is there anything else that anyone has any questions about the agenda? Okay, you need to make a motion to accept that with that amendment.
Leave that for the amendment.
Second.
All in favor? All right, now get the fun stuff started. Mr. Bishop, thank you for bringing Roundstone Elementary to visit us tonight, so tell us what you got.
Well, I know the stars are over here, but I'm gonna talk first.
It's always hard to follow.
Yeah, I'd much rather go first, that's for sure. If you'll look in that gray folder I brought you, there's lots of information. I know we only have ten minutes, and I think that they get eight of them, so I'm gonna be relatively quick. Just a couple of things, you know, that introduction there kind of tells a little bit about Roundstone. And I guess, you know, everybody in here knows about Roundstone, but just a few things that I like to talk about is that Roundstone Elementary believes that all students can learn and learn at high levels. Each student is met at his or her point of need, and we focus on meeting individual needs and measuring individual student success in all subject areas. We are family, and building relationships is our most important part of our work as we educate our students and community. And this year I added "community" in there because I think that a lot of, I mean, I know you all know, but a lot of our our community doesn't realize what goes on for the community. Some examples, like our Christmas for some of our kids, I think that we had twenty-seven or twenty-eight kids that are families, I should say families, and obviously some of those families have multiple kids. And, you know, they get, we give them presents, and not just Roundstone, not just our youth service, and I'm very appreciative of the funding for that. But outside, you know, we had a factory in Brea, for example, that donated awesome gifts, you know, and they took the names of kids and things like that. So it's very, you know, it is all for the community, and we like to talk about how we are for the whole child, not just, we wanna be academics, obviously, that's our number-one concern. But we, there's lots of other things, and I have some stories here in a little bit that I'll talk about. But kind of getting into the meat of my presentation here, if you'll look about halfway down, our comprehensive school improvement plan, our CSIP, is something that Mr. Robbie Phillips stays on us to get finished by and on our, on our site base agenda in December. And I did print it off. It is in here. It's about five or six pages. I took some of the high school stuff out and just the elementary stuff. Feel free to look through that if you ever have any questions about it. I kind of summarized it down below. Some of our goals were, it has seven points that it, that the CSIP really talks about. It's your goals, your objectives, your strategies, your activities, how to measure those, how to monitor those, and where does the funding come from, and I'll leave the funding to you all, so. But if you'll just look, like, for example, the areas of testing, I have our current scores. And they, the CSIP really wants to know what your current scores are. You plug those in, and then what are your goals for the next year? And you can see there, for example, reading, we scored a seventy-point-seven. Not, not too shabby, not, you know, I mean, I didn't go back and look if that's, you know, one-hundred-and-seventeenth in the state or something. I just pulled that number out, but I know that's right. So, but, you know, like, goal scores, seventy-five-point-nine, you know, and there's a way that I came up with that score in our, in our site base. And you can go down through their, like, math, you know, across the board. I think our math scores are down, but I'd like to go from a fifty-six-point-three to a sixty-nine-point-nine. And I'll tell you how we're gonna do that in just a second. Science, you can see, there's a jump there, a big jump in social studies as well, and writing. And you look at your novice students and your apprentice students, your proficient students, and your distinguished students, and what percentage you have. And there's all kinds of different routes to get to how, how you want that goal. I just, I don't know if it's the easy approach. I call it the common sense approach. I just looked at our novice kids and our, and since COVID, and I hate even talking about that, but our novice numbers have went up, and kids that score on that, in that bottom plateau right there. And what can we do to improve our scores, lower our novice, our percentage of novice students? And I don't know what year it was, sixteen, seventeen, when we, Roundstone scored really high in the state, that's when we were down to about ten percent. In some areas, we were less than ten percent novice, and so that's our goal this year, and is to be ten percent or less novice students across the board, third, fourth, and fifth, the kids that are tested. And we also, now with iReady, we can throw those kids, those students, those younger students in, and see their scores as well. So, and I put that there below the numbers. It says, "We will accomplish this by working to lower our percent novice in academic area to ten percent, with the exceptions of math and science." I did put the exception of math because that percent novice is so high, I cut it in half. And it went from thirty-four percent to seventeen percent. And if we, if we just do that, if we don't move another kid from, from apprentice to proficient or proficient to distinguished, our scores will improve that much. That's just moving kids from the novice area to the, to the apprentice, not, to the apprentice area. So I think that's very doable, and those kids, you know, we have all kinds of resources. We have, you know, Save the Children, and, you know, those are our apprentice kids, but we have the MTSS and Interventionist. We have lots and lots and lots of resources. And that, those are, those are the, the numbers that we wanna move at Roundstone to, to improve our scores. The next bit of data, I think Mr. Thomas, I found out that he's gonna be talking about, but iReady stuff, I think. But I have, I have two sheets in here. If you'll just look at them, and I just want you to look at the colors. And in, they're at the top, one of them is math and one of them is reading. So I got the, the reading one here. If you'll look at that triangle, the one on the left is our winter scores, the ones that we took right before Christmas break. The one on the right that's kind of faded out, that just, that's how it prints it off, is the fall scores. And you can see the little thin line of green, that's kids that are on grade level. Green is on grade level, okay? And you can see that we went from twenty-two percent to thirty-nine percent, so we almost doubled our on-grade level kids from August till December. And then the yellow, that, those are kids that are one grade level behind. That's probably your middle-of-the-road kids, your, your apprentice kids, and we went from fifty percent to forty percent. So we lowered that because we moved, moved them all into the green, right? And then the red, those are kids that are two grade levels below or greater. And you can see there that we went from twenty-nine percent, so almost a third of our kids were two grade levels or more behind, to twenty-one percent, so a fifth. And you kind of get the, kind of get the feel as you look through there, and it even breaks it down by grade level. And I'm just gonna pick one grade. If you'll look at kindergarten and reading, the top line is winter and the bottom line is fall. So we went from fifteen percent of kids being on grade level as, when they came in, which many of those never had been in school, obviously. We have a few preschoolers, or maybe a daycare-type school, things like that, so we had fifteen percent. And I'll give you that number, that was five kids. We had five kids on grade level in kindergarten when school started, okay? And then in December, the, I don't know what day it was, the tenth or whatever time, whenever they took the winter one, we went to sixty-seven percent on grade level. And that was twenty-two kids, so twenty-two of our thirty-three kindergarteners are on grade level as of December. Now, it doesn't mean they can't slide back, but what a jump that is, you know, seventeen kids in, in three months, you know? And a lot of that's just getting them into school, getting them into that routine, and them understanding that. And you can go down through each grade. You can do reading, you can do math, you can make that comparison to when they started, where they were on the first week of school, to where they were at when Christmas break started. So lots of data. I'm a numbers guy. My wife, she's in here. She could tell you. I could talk all day numbers, and, and I love that. But you, you can look, and it even breaks it down by placement, you know, if it's phonics or if it is high-frequency words, you can see the difference of how much improvement that that, that they've had. And the same thing in math. You can, you can look over there at the math one. We had a little bitty thin green line in the fall of twelve percent. Think of that, twelve percent, barely one out of ten kids that were on grade level in math, and now it is twenty-five percent. So we're, we're climbing that hill. Now, I know that kind of goes against what I said about the novice is our focus, but look how many kids have already moved into on-grade level. So, and, and our, our novice, which would probably be in the red, obviously, there's those outliers and, and things that Mr. Thomas probably will talk about later on. You know, kids that, one time they score in the first percentile, the next time they score in the ninety percentile. There are kids that do that. Maybe they had a bad night, things that, the whole child that we work on every day. But, you know, that, it's just a snapshot of, of our, of our test in August versus December. So I'll, I'll quit talking about all that. I want to give you just a couple of stories, talking about the whole child. I won't give any kids' names, but Mr. Tipton, I sent out an email to our teachers and I said, "Hey, if you have any students that you, that are good things that you wanna tell, let me know." And I know we have some students in here, so I won't give any students' names away. But we have a, a student that is a fourth grader that read, and I sent the video to Ms. Carrie, that read his first book. Or his, it was really two paragraphs, but his, the first time, you know, awesome, awesome. Ms. Cook, a special education teacher, has a student that is a second grader that counted to forty. This is, this might be my favorite because it's the, it's the whole child. Ms. Amy, which is our speech pathologist, she, she's like, "You've got to tell this one." We have a kindergartner that came into school, no communication skills. I mean, you know, I mean, could say some words, some basic words, but just, you couldn't understand. Had no behavior, had never been in school, never been in any structure whatsoever, none, zero. And he, his motor skills were terrible, and I hate to say that about kids, but they were bad. They were, he was in the first percentile across the board and everything. Low as you could, as you could be. So I counted up. We have twenty-one staff members that have been working with this kid, twenty-one in little old Roundstone. Twenty-one staff members. That includes the kitchen, that includes the janitors, that includes all the assistants, the office staff, everybody. We have twenty-one different bodies that have come into contact and worked with this student on different things. That's speech, OT, everything. That's including the bus driver, because the bus driver, every day, has a conversation with him. And every morning, when he gets, and not all bus drivers, Mr. Hopkins, and, is he in? Oh, here he is. And, and he can probably tell you which bus driver it is, because he is always way too early to school. But, but he talks to him, he takes care of him, and he has that interaction with him. We have twenty-one staff members. He lives with a grandparent and a grandmother, and he is still not up to par with his class yet. But Ms. Amy said that he has fell in love with learning, and, and that's what it's all about, you know, he's six-five-and-a-half years old. Y'all think he's turned six yet. So those are just a few stories. And one last thing, we have, we did get United member, I mean, United team or whatever of the year, which Ms. Karen Barron's done a great job. But back in the, in the fall, we launched balloons, and they were biodegradable balloons and strings, and so nobody has to get mad about all that. But we have got, I asked her today, we have gotten fifteen of them back, and we did a QR code, so some people did it on the computer. We put a phone number on there. They could call, or they could mail it in, like when we were in school. And we have gotten a couple, we got one from Cumberland County, Virginia, that was in the woods. We got one at Chesapeake Bay, Maryland, and it washed up on the beach.
That is amazing.
So, and, and she hadn't checked. She just checked these today, like, these, those were two newer ones. We had all kinds that came in from Roundstone area, and like one of our former students, you know, that he went hunting, it was right during deer season. He found it right next to his tree stand, you know, and they all snapped pictures because it gives them a little direction, like take a picture of themselves. And each student had a certain number. We started with fifth grade, and the first person in the alphabet in, in fifth grade was number one, and we numbered all the way down to number two-hundred-and-eighty-two, or whatever it is. And so we know which kids items or balloons got sent back. So it's just some things that we do, you know, and you all know the story. You'll probably hear it every month about, you know, you feed them and do all that, but just the whole kid, you know, and, and them learning how to read for the first time, you know, out loud. And, and yes, there was a struggle or two in there, but first time ever, you know, and, and, you know, and students, you know, lots of times, and families have issues, and this, this student has all kinds of health issues, and he's not, he missed a lot of school, kindergarten, first grade, and then COVID, obviously. And so, you know, how much further will he come just by, you know, student, I mean, by teachers taking an interest in working with him? And then the, the other student, the one that had twenty-one Roundstone employees taking care of him every day, and, and listen, he's, he's stuck with us until he's through fifth grade. He's a kindergartner, so, you know, he's got a lot more years with us, so. I will now be quiet. I know I talked past my ten minutes. I'm sorry. I will. I will turn it over to Ms. Starla. She does the Gifted and Talented, and she has a very special group of kids here that's going to teach you all a little something here, so. And if you, they might need to clear out their table a little bit.
Yeah, you'll need a spot.
You'll need a spot, maybe about as big as your computer or something for some Play-Doh. I think, and I'll be quiet. Thank you.
I love Play-Doh.
So for you all that don't know, I'm Ms. Starla. That's what they call me, but my whole name is Starla, and I'm the Gifted and Talented teacher for the Rockcastle County School District, and I work at each of the elementary schools and the middle school, and service right around a hundred-and-seventy-five students. We had four new added just this week. So I think I'm right at about a hundred-and-seventy-five right now. And each of those students have diverse gifts and talents, and some of them may have a single area that they're identified, and then others might have multiple. And this is just one of my groups at Roundstone, and this is my math and science group. And before I started planning lessons for these students, one of the important things for Gifted and Talented students is to target their super interests. And so before I started planning my lessons, I surveyed each of the students to see what kind of things they were interested in learning about. And it never failed. Every school I went to, every student in the math and science groups were interested in Earth and the solar system and those type of things. And so that's where we started our lessons, was talking about Earth, and our very first lesson was talking about the rock cycle. And so they're gonna do the lesson that I did with them with you. They're gonna teach you guys the lesson that they learned about the rock cycle, okay? So we have Jaylee with us today. We have Beau, Eli, Rhett, and Silas, and they're gonna lead this lesson for you guys. Go ahead. So everybody's gonna bring you a piece of Play-Doh, and you have to imagine that this Play-Doh is an igneous rock. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll eat it.
Now you're gonna take the Play-Doh and break it up into little pieces, which is signifying sediment because it, because of erosion, weathering, freezing and thawing, and human, human and animal interacts. Let's get our piles.
We need to work faster.
We're sorry. We're slow.
And now, once you're done, put, squ- push all this stuff into a little pile. And then, over the years, pressure from being, the sediment being buried would smash it together and cause it to, to become a sedimentary rock.
So you'll need to add pressure.
Yeah. So this is assuming that if the pressure, all the pieces of sediment has been built up with pressure and the clay and sediment are also.
Look at the show.
So over time, your sedimentary rock builds up layers, and over heat, while heat and pressure build up, it can form layers, and with the heat, it can also form crystals. So I want you to take all the Play-Doh.
Thank you.
And push all of them together. And I can see. There are layers. Any rock can be an igneous rock once it's turned into molten. So you're gonna take your Play-Doh, and you're just gonna squish it up, representing you turning your Play-Doh into molten. This is the rock from, like, the rock Play-Doh, and it has little holes in it because whatever it was, uh, it, it was cool. Whatever it's cooling, it had little gas bubbles inside of it, and that's why it got to.
So thank you guys so much for having us. One more thing before we go. My creative thinking and leadership groups at each of the elementary schools has been working on creating the school news for their school. And so they, I have a paper here for you that has a QR code to every school's first news broadcast that they did, that they put out this week. This is their first pilot run of their school news, and so you can scan those QR codes and watch the news that they created this week.
Thank you for that.
I watched Mount Vernon's. It was great, so I'm excited to watch the others.
Ms. Carrie just said to me, and I have to be in agreement, that we, you all probably, someone in this group will probably be on the Discovery Channel one day.
What are you doing next week, or next?
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. You did a great job. Thank you.
I say this every month, but our student showcases the highlight of our meeting. And, and I always reflect back, and I think about the time, I think these, these are fifth-grade students, fourth and fifth. And the time when I was in fourth or fifth grade, I'm not certain that I would have ever had enough confidence to come up and present before Board of Education and speak so, so eloquently and know your content and able to, to teach others. And, you know, that's the highest form of learning. If you know the content and you're able to teach it to someone else, then, then you have a full grasp of that, of that. So thank you all. We're so proud of each of you, and we invite you all to come back anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. I think they're gonna, some of them, they'll probably slip out.
Sure, absolutely. Yes, yes. And to the board, I will say, Ms. Starla's position is a new position that, that you all approved this year, and thank you for that, because you can see the impact that it makes on our kids.
Mr. Bishop, before you leave, I just want to say, thank you, and please send, please send our thanks and gratitude to all of your staff.
Oh, yeah.
And you were talking about the whole child, and we don't, I choose not to think about it sometimes because it saddens me so much, but I know that you all deal with it day in and day out, so, you know, I just appreciate what you do. I appreciate the fact that you have twenty-one staff members that take time out of their day to go the extra mile to help a child. And I appreciate that bus driver that gets there early and that, you know, just, just everything, and so thank you.
And that's what I had mentioned to Ms. Ballinger. That's what, that's our why, you know, why do we do it, those kids like that? And of course, I get all emotional, so I had to cut off there, but, but, you know, it is, and, and it's, it's fun to watch them grow from, you know, even if they come in and they're really low, it's still, it is, it's a pleasure to see them, you know, learn to tie their shoes and learn to, you know, make sure that they don't have a snotty nose because they know to clean it. I mean, those things that, you know, so many people don't understand that we do way more of them than the ABCs and the one-two-threes. There's so much more to it. And I know that's what everybody in the newspaper and on social media, that's what they look at, at the test scores. And, but really, that's just a little, just a, you know, a drop in the bucket to so many other things. And that, and I'm really, I've just, I focused on the younger kids, all the way up to our fifth graders, you know, there's all kinds of stuff. Because at that age, and, and I know I'm still in your lost time, I'm sorry, there's so much stuff going on as they, you know, fourth and fifth graders, they start maturing, and they have phones, and they, social media, and so that's a whole different ballgame. We'll talk about it next January. I mean, it is, it's unbelievable. And then you have, you know, parents that, that are, that are tough to handle and tough to deal with, and they, they don't put the best for their kids out, you know, and have to deal with it every day, and that, and makes it, that makes it very, very, a burden on you that, that you just worry and think about all the time. But then when you see those highlights of those kids that, that do that, that makes it all worth it, so.
Just like the child that you videoed that learned to read the first couple paragraphs, the only thing that was created in that moment was freedom. That is the beginning of a freedom that will, he... That is the beginning of a freedom that will, he can carry on his whole life, because it opens doors of opportunity and.
Well, it's a topic in places that he might never say.
Thank you.
Like the second grader that did the counting, he used a tens frame. And, and I hadn't been, I hadn't seen him practicing it up to that for the last months of school. But Ms. Cook, like, hit his teens. He struggled with it, with teens. Like that concept, he, he just couldn't get it. So she simply, instead of using blue blocks, she used orange. And so like before they got started, she said, what are the orange blocks? And he said, the teens. Like, like he knew. And she knew to do that with him, you know, and that's why our teachers are so great. And so when he got to twelve, and then he looked at the next one, he knew it was a teen, because it was orange, and it was thirteen, and fourteen, fifteen. And boom, he was at forty, you know. And so, and I told him, I said, well, when you get to eighty, come and tell me when I get a pop. I bribe with candy, that's what I like. But thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on our agenda is operations and actions. Um, I, there was nothing there that surprised me. I had questions of, does anyone have any questions under operations and actions that they like to ask?
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to have an invite to the Kiss a Pig fundraiser.
I did wanna say thank you to whoever made the list of those fundraisers on the front. That was helpful. Whoever did that, so thank you.
She started it. I did this, I said she started it, and so I did. She continued what she was doing. So my family started it.
All right. With that being said, if nothing else, I need a motion to accept. All right. All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, item five A is review and approve the monthly financial reports. We have those. I think everyone has had the opportunity to look at those. Ms. Jeanne, unless there's something specific, I need, that needs to be discussed. I'm ready to vote for that. All in favor? Uh, we pass five B to another time. Five C, review and approve the first reading of the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar committee recommendation.
Well, as you all know, last month, you approved the calendar committee. And so we met right after that. That was, I think, on Tuesday night. We met on Thursday. Ms. Anna's part of that, Mr. Trent. Of course, we've got community representation, parents, school staff on that committee. And at that first meeting, we talked about basically some of the laws that govern the school calendar. And then we looked at a couple options. And the committee then took those options back to their respective groups and discussed those with parents, business community. And then, of course, we had a PD day on January the third. And I think that's when a lot of our schools looked at the calendar. Uh, some of our committee members got very creative. They did Google Forms. They had surveys and brought that. And that was really helpful in terms of us trying to figure out and, and, and I guess quantify feedback that people got. So then we met again last Thursday, and basically went around the room. Everyone talked about the feedback that they had, they had received. And there were a lot of, a lot of comments that were similar things, such as fall break and spring break incredibly popular. And trying to keep that the same week every year, the first week of October, first week of April. Uh, the start date, essentially the same as it's been the last few years. And then, of course, that makes the end date pretty similar. Uh, the biggest area, I guess, of discussion was Christmas break, and then Thanksgiving break, and also some PD adjustments. And so you all can see the options there. And what we did, we basically tweaked option two. So the committee looked at both options, and option two was, was quite a bit different. We did introduce the idea just in that option within the group of an early release date. Um, but that didn't, that didn't gain a lot of traction. There was some opposition to that. So we didn't include that in either of these options that we're now presenting to you. And if, again, if you look at those, very similar to this year's calendar, the biggest difference is that on option one, there is a full week for Thanksgiving break. We don't have the typical election day break and the PD day before that. We moved election day. And we took away that, that break before election day and made election day a PD day. Uh, there was some discussion about that. A lot of our school folks work the polls. And of course, they wouldn't be able to work the polls if it was a PD day. They'd have to show up for work. And that was something that I really hadn't thought that much about. But that was, that was certainly a concern. And then, of course, as always, we just come back from Christmas break, and I think folks liked having two weeks, two full weeks of Christmas. And that was probably the most popular comment, wouldn't you say, Ms. Anna? Was having two weeks at Christmas. And so, um, so to make a long story short, option two was the option that the committee is recommending to you. And if you look, look at that option, the PD days there, not a lot of change. And those, the biggest change in terms of PD, we did add an embedded PD day, another one in March. And so that basically gives us, after every nine-week break, that gives us a full PD day for teachers to be able to look at data, to be able to meet with their departments, to be able to meet with their, their grade-level teachers, or to meet as an entire school. And that certainly is, is helpful. I know the, the PD day that we had coming back from, from Christmas break, it was very beneficial, I think, for all of our staff. And that, that time in March, that's a long period without a break. That was also a concern that was voiced. So we added that third PD day in March. If you remember this year's calendar, we started on August the fourth, which was a Friday. So essentially, we took that and made it an embedded PD day there on March, um, the fifteenth. And of course, that's a workday for all staff and not for students. Um, we did resume in option two, the PD day on November the sixth. And then the election day is just a break day there. Thanksgiving break, the same as it is, two full weeks for Christmas break. And then, of course, the four holidays that we typically always have. PD day coming back January of twenty-twenty-four, January second there. And then it's state law. We have to have Martin Luther King Junior Day off. Uh, we did add President's Day in there, just to, again, break up some of that time. And then fall and spring break, the same. Uh, May of twenty-twenty-four is a primary election day, May twenty-first there. So the last day for students would be May the twenty-third on discount. And you can see the breakdown, hundred and seventy instruction days, four holidays, three embedded PD day, days, and then eight normal PD days. So, uh, option two was the recommendation of that committee. Uh, so at this point, uh, we, these options been presented to you. And then we'll come back in February, and you all vote to approve this, and then we come back in February. It's not official until the February board meeting. So the options are presented, the recommendation is heard, you decide that, and then the February's meeting is when it becomes official. So I want, I always wanna emphasize that, this is a draft until that February meeting.
Do you want them to take a vote on this?
Do we have to take a vote? I mean, because.
I, I would prefer you to take a, take a vote because.
For which option we're.
For which option. And it could change. You know, if we hear from community members and they come to you and wanna change that in February, we could, we could change that. But that does solidify that, that, that selection, at least at this point. And, and folks know that you all are in approval for the calendar committee recommendation, which you may not be. It's obviously your, your decision on that. But, but that's what they recommended, and I would prefer you to, to, to take a vote on that. And then, and then in February, it become official.
So the recommendation on the table is this, to take option two. And this is the first reading of that. So we will have a motion to approve that for option two, that recommendation tonight. And we will follow up in February with a second. So is anyone having questions for Mr. Ripper? No? Okay. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? Thank you, Mr. Ripper. Five D, review and approve the twenty-two, twenty-three healthy school assessment and local wellness policy. Ms. Mattingly was kind enough to make us a, uh, I passed it out. Uh, just give us the highlights of the report that she has to send in. Uh, you have that to look over. Yeah, one little sheet.
That just gives you a history of, and the requirements of that policy, and why we have to, have to have one. Um, every school completed a healthy schools assessment. I completed one for the district. Then we, we met twice in October and November as a committee to review that policy. Ms. Andy Woods is the board representative for that, but she also counts as a community member. So you, you can see in that policy, the committee members and the makeup of that committee. And, and then what we've done is look at the policy that we had in place, and then think about revisions that we needed to make. But then looking at those healthy school assessments and seeing what our needs are, what we really wanna focus on. The only thing I'm gonna talk about or say is that one of our goals, when we put our monthly menus on the website, we wanna be able to provide more in-depth nutritional information for our families and communities. So I'm looking at programs right now that will allow us to connect each item in our menu to that nutritional information. So parents will be informed about what's involved with calories and carbs and protein in each of those items. But that's like a software issue, and that's a little of my ability right now. But it's gonna take a while to do that, because you have to input every single item. And that takes a long time. But we are in the process of doing that, starting that. So hopefully by this next year, that's a big goal that we have, is to have that up and running. So our families, communities, and students too. When they look at our menu, they can say, well, what, what exactly is in that? Because there might be health issues, allergy issues, all kinds of things. Uh, reasons that students and parents would need to know that information. And I know we don't have anything that's readily available. So that's one of our goals. That's all I'll say about that. But I have to submit this policy, revised policy to KDE by May. So it has to be presented at a local forum, a board meeting like this one here this month. So that, that's helpful to me. And I don't know that it has to have approval, but I'm asking for approval. So if someone asks, and I can say, yes, our board has read this policy. They've, they've seen it. They know what's in it, and they've approved it. So that's all.
This is something that's done yearly, Ms. Jennifer? I was looking at the dates.
Every three years.
Every three years. Okay. All right.
So I think the last time was two thousand eighteen is when the board approved it.
I, I was looking at the dates. I didn't know if they let you take a break during the COVID years or whatever.
Okay. Yes. And so now, they're trying to get everybody back on track with their administrative reviews. So this policy is part of my administrative review and food service. So they will look at all of those meetings, agendas, signings, policy, everything. And so I would like to have that on file.
I make a motion to approve. You have a motion? Need a second?
Got a first and second? All in favor? Thank you, Ms. Jennifer. Item five E, review and approve the BG one for Rockcastle County Middle School project. Uh, thank you, Mr. Travis Curry. Is that correct? Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Travis Curry. I'm with Codell, and I'm gonna serve as a project manager for your middle school addition and renovation. And I'm sure Mr. Codell's already done this, but if he hasn't, I wanna thank you for giving us the opportunity to be a part of your team, and we look forward to that. Uh, since I'm gonna be working with you for the next twenty-four, thirty months, a little background on me. Um, I'm a graduate from AKU through the construction manager program. I've been working in construction for the past thirty-three years. Started working in high school and been in the ditches and fortunate enough to be where I am today. So, uh, that's a quick background on me. So for the past several months, we have been working, dealing, seeing with Ms. Ballinger and members of her staff, and Mr. Derek Backher, and members of the design team, working on developing the budget, uh, for your middle school project. And that budget is a very detailed budget. And with that budget, we create multiple pages, multiple breakdowns, and identify all those items. And that budget is used to create the BG one form, which I believe is in your packet. And with that budget, in consulting with your financial, uh, fiscal agent, uh, we show total, uh, project, uh, cost of forty-three million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents for your project. We are also working on identifying a couple of alternates. Um, one of those would be your auxiliary gym. Where we're looking at, uh, the entrance row, there's a couple of options there that we're still trying to settle on, making sure that's fit your project just the way that it needs to be. So, um, I won't get too windy here, but again, I just wanted to come for you, not, uh, present these numbers to you and give you an opportunity to look at those. And my understanding is you will be taking action maybe in a few weeks or at the next board meeting on these items. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you may be having. But you'll start seeing a lot more of me. I know you've been seeing Derek and his team. But once we get ready to put this project out to bed and in construction, then you'll start seeing a lot more of me. But again, I wanna thank Ms. Ballinger, her team. We've been having teams, meetings every two weeks. Um, and fine-tuning things and getting your project ready to move forward. So any questions?
I guess we had discussed, I think I talked to Carrie, and I talked to Ms. Anne and Misty a little bit. Big difference in the price from the original, which I understand the cost of inflation and all of that. Whenever we do have a working session and we move forward with this, I guess I'm, I'm gonna have to have it in simple man's terms. I'd like to know why there was such a jump. I mean, just, um, maybe you could come also to that meeting, uh, because, uh, I, you know, it's a lot of money.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
And I mean, it's a lot of money. And not that I want to halt this process at all, because this is, this is a need, but I just have questions. So.
So this process does not include the new?
Auxiliary gym. No. So I mean, just questions. Uh, Ms. Carrie, with that being said, what was the date that you all were looking at?
We need to set that in the next two weeks. It needs to be in the month of January, because we need to add that budget, draft budget to that. So maybe at the close of this meeting, we can set, set a special call meeting. And at that time, our fiscal agent is going to come and discuss the funds available column.
Sure.
And walk through all of the different parts of funding that we will pull to, to get to this final project cost. And then we can invite Travis to come to that as well.
Just let me know when that is, and we'll be here.
Well, thank you so much. It's my understanding what we are approving tonight is, is just, we're sending, submitting this to KDE so that we can start the process to do everything else that we need to do, correct? All right. Go ahead and ask.
I guess it's worth asking. I think I know the answer, but in your professional opinion, there's no, no fluff in this that we can cut. This is pretty much the best we can do.
And you know, the comment just made, the best we can do. Yes, we have been working very diligently on this estimate. And, uh, as I told Ms. Ballinger, this is all in estimate. And so these bids are turned in on bid day, and you're gonna have multiple bids. It's kinda like building a house. If you've built a house before, you set a budget, and you hope you stay within that budget. I may be two million high, I may be two million low. I have to give you the best estimate that I can give you. But until the person signing on the dotted line and has to sign that bid bond, turns their numbers in, these numbers are constantly up and down all the time.
And, and the other thing, I'm sure you've went through this numerous times, every project that I've ever seen keeps going up.
Yes, ma'am. So.
So we're looking at forty-three million, but by the time it's finished, that's not a definite, correct?
Well, in your, in your forty-three million, you have a lot of items for a construction contingency, okay? KDE requires you to carry. And in this, it's roughly one point eight million. I do not anticipate you're gonna spend that one point eight million, but the bottom line is it's included in that number.
So it cannot go above that one point eight million.
Well, the only way it can be above that is if there are significant changes made in design after the fact, but I do not anticipate that happening. Yes, ma'am. So basically, on bid day, when we open up the bids, uh, we will know at the conclusion of that bid opening what the cost of your project is for the bids. And then the only way that cost will change is if there are any unforeseen conditions or changes in scope of work that's requested by them. And that will be covered in that contingency amount that you have.
Appreciate you coming. And, um, listen, unfortunately, I'll have a lot of questions. I mean, I mean. I mean, I have, and the only reason, you know, uh, it's one thing approving a three million dollar project, which is more than I can fathom having in my bank account, but forty-three million.
Yes, ma'am. I understand it's.
And it's went up so much, you know. So I guess that, you know.
Yeah, we'll be able to identify those reasons that went up for you at that board meeting.
So thank you so much.
And there's no dumb question. Don't ask any question.
You've not heard all my questions.
We will answer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you. So it is left up to us tonight to go ahead and approve this BG one that has been submitted to us. So it is left up to us tonight to, uh, go ahead and approve this BG one that has been submitted to us. This will be sent to K D E and, uh, that will get our name out there so that we can get going, right? Okay, so I need a motion. First and second, all in favor? Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. We appreciate you. Look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
The next thing on our agenda is six A is our review superintendent's personnel action report. Uh, if anyone has any questions for Ms. Carrie, you can talk to her about it later.
It's it's loaded. If anyone has any questions about that.
We were, do we have, I I do have one question. Do we have any jobs posted right now, teaching wise?
We we have been able, we had some certified vacant jobs, um, two science teachers at the middle school and a math teacher at the high school, but we have filled those with retired teachers, um, because we did not have any certified applicants. So those have been filled with retired teachers and that will be, that is shown on your, on your personnel action.
So we're not in any need right now?
No, no, the only, we have some classified jobs posted for coaching, assistant coaching positions that that are, that are, they're posted.
That's wonderful. Much better than what, a month ago?
Yes, and and very, again, very thankful for those teachers that have been willing to come out of retirement to help us. Just very, very appreciative of that.
Yes, yes, most definitely. Uh, item seven is department reports. Uh, we have those. Anyone that had submitted. So anyone have any questions for anyone?
I think Mr. Thomas is going to give just a brief update on iReady.
We'd love to hear from you, Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, uh, good evening. Just just want to provide you all some information on diagnostic growth and kind of what that entails, what that means. Really an update, uh, to this point in the school year of where we are. So you all have the reports, uh, the electronic copies that I've shared with you in in those notes. And so the first one I I'm going to look at is is diagnostic growth for reading. And so, you know, just just to again, give you some more information and and to kind of be more transparent with this process. Uh, you may be aware of this, but at the beginning of the school year, in the early fall, all of our schools, uh, administered a fall diagnostic screening assessment. And so this is checking to see where all of our students are towards proficiency and whatever grade level they are. And so they do this in reading and math and they're given a scale score that kind of sets a baseline for them. Now, the iReady program also offers, uh, for each individual student, a typical growth goal as well as a stretch growth goal. Now, a typical growth goal is is basically just the average annual growth that a student will show throughout a school year. Uh, stretch growth, uh, is is a little bit higher. It's more more ambitious, but certainly attainable for for some students. Um, these are just really good resources, uh, for our teachers to use each and every day as far as targeting individual kids. And and I can promise you all, we're we're having just really good, uh, academic educational conversations, uh, at the school level and at the district level. And so with with diagnostic growth, right before Christmas break, we took our second diagnostic test. And with that, you know, we we have enough data that we can tell whether or not our students are progressing, uh, in in a positive manner. And so what you see in front of you, uh, I'm looking again at the reading, uh, report there. And on the left at the top, you see the progress to annual typical growth and you have that light blue and gray line there for you. So it says there that as a district, as a district, uh, every elementary school and the middle school, uh, data for the high school is not offered with this particular report. And there's various reasons for that. High school is, uh, just, you know, as far as the tools, uh, instructionally that iReady has to offer, we we still use this, uh, for the diagnostic screening test, but as far as the the day in, day out, there there's not a lot of, uh, of of information more so to provide, uh, for the high school. But anyways, so in the area of reading, uh, this report states that, uh, we are showing sixty-three percent, uh, progress towards a typical growth. In math, uh, it is sixty-one percent, uh, prog- progression towards annual typical growth. Now, I want to give you a a quick analogy. Uh, to me, this made the most sense. And and so you think about this line, uh, kind of like on, uh, as a football field. Obviously, a football field is is one hundred yards. And so the middle of the field is at the fifty-yard line. So if your team has the ball and you're on offense and you're trying to score, uh, in your end zone, once you reach past the fifty-yard line, uh, the odds of being able to to get into further defensive territory and score is going to be much higher. So also with that, you think of a school year in itself, uh, the halfway point is right around the Christmas break. So again, all of our schools administered, uh, their second diagnos- diagnostic test right before the Christmas break. Um, so that's at the fifty percent point. So as far as these scores, what we're seeing here is that our students have have passed the fifty-yard line and that we're headed, uh, in in a very positive direction, uh, at sixty-three and sixty-one percent. And and so as we go into the school year later on, those numbers will change as well. Uh, and I expect that we'll be, uh, able to to get closer to one hundred percent. Now, again, they these numbers are are reasons to to be happy, to celebrate. Uh, we're certainly not satisfied with those by by no means. But again, this just kind of gives you some 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 information. If you look to the right there, Mr. Bishop kind of hit on, uh, this, kind of puts you in the mind of of a stoplight with the green and yellow and red. Uh, you all can see there just the current placement distribution, uh, of our students. Again, they're in the green with the stripes, you know, the the mid or above grade level. So those students that, uh, have tested at that level, you know, back in the fall, we were at ten percent as a district. We're to the point now that we're at eighteen percent. And you can see all of those placement levels have changed. Uh, I think it is important to note that, uh, you know, we're we're going to have kids in the red. We're we're going to have kids at various places and and that's why, you know, this this information, I just think, is is so important to us. Uh, because again, you know, I I just think our per- our profession is in a, is in a shift. And and we have to be willing and ready to meet kids at whatever level they are, from the highest to the lowest. And and so with that, uh, you know, again, let you all kind of sink in on on some of these numbers. I'm sure you you've looked at this, uh, report before. Uh, going on down below, uh, kind of gives you a a breakdown per grade level, again, of of kindergarten through through eighth grade. And so again, as as administrators, as principals, as teachers, you know, we we can look at the information that we have and then we can really, uh, make good instructional decisions and plan for where we want to go next. And so you can see there, every grade level, uh, is, uh, just about every grade level is is over, uh, fifty percent uh, in progression towards annual growth. And and again, I I just think that is, that is, you know, we're we're moving in the right direction.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If you look at, um, looking at reading, grade seven, it says, uh, hundred and seventeen percent.
That's a good question. And certainly that number sticks out.
Is that a good question?
That's a good question. I'm glad you pointed that out.
I mean, I'm curious, yeah.
You know, Ms. Mr. Bishop mentioned outlier, that that term in itself, as as far as number goes. Um, arguably, grade seven, grade eight, you kind of see an outlier there and and that's for various factors. Uh, you know, I had a conversation with with Ms. Jessica and her team the other day in in one of our trainings that that is also listed, uh, there in the department reports. But, you know, again, there there's not just one thing, uh, Ms. Angie, but you know, as, you know, staff turnover, the the becoming familiar with the program more so with with those teachers, the the program usage, the student exposure from fall to winter could could cause some outliers there. So, you know, that's that's why it's important that we we be really consistent with with this tool and and use the 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 program, uh, you know, with with fidelity, uh, so to speak.
Because the math is the same way too, I guess, for middle school, seventh and eighth. I didn't, I would, that was kind of what I was going to ask. Is there something that they're, it's middle school's difference? Is there something they're doing differently? And I'm sure that's something you'll pick apart. Is it because of the age of the kid? You know, there's a lot of factors, I'm sure. Interesting. So what's the goal in this, um, overall? Do you want to try to meet a hundred percent in the fall? Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say?
More so, more so by the spring. Uh, so so all of all of our students will will take this diagnostic test, okay? And and this is a big piece of the pie. We we take it in the fall, the winter and then the spring.
So this is against yourself. This is against you. Okay, that's that was my question. You don't want to start at a hundred. You want to show, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So we start the school year, you know, you're coming off the summer, you know, kids are out of school. You're you're going to have maybe even a little regression, right? So you're starting at zero and then at the midpoint, you know, as mentioned, uh, fifty percent. Uh, we're we're seeing numbers that are higher than that. And then by the spring, you know, the school kind of winds down. We we want to be closer to that one hundred percent.
They just start at your baseline in the fall and then you work up towards your goal. Okay.
Yeah, like your students, uh, targeted groups that would have disabilities, uh, you know, like always in the past, you know, someone might need a scribe or what, do we do that for this type of testing? Is that, is that an accommodation we offer?
Another good que- question. Uh, so some of those students that you see in the red there, um, you know, this doesn't take into account a student's I A P, especially to this point in the year. So some of those students will be receiving accommodations for state testing in the spring.
So that could be a lot of improvement than what is reflected on these reports.
Uh, to be honest with you, last spring at Mount Vernon Elementary, we kind of used that spring diagnostic as as really a a scrimmage to the, uh, K S A. And so we offered those stu- students accommodations and, I mean, it's it's kind of obvious, but those scores certainly rose. And and you could just see how important having that adult, having that that proctor with them was.
I guess I have two questions. The the students that are two and three grade levels below are my biggest concern. Now, I know long-term that gets better. If we do a good job, that number decreases because we get them on grade level now and we keep them there, hopefully forever. But I mean, short-term, how do you get somebody that's three grade levels below caught up? We never get them caught up probably, but how do we get them closer?
Right. No, good question. Um, I, if you look, uh, maybe, uh, again, uh, if you look towards the bottom of the report where it says percent students, uh, with improved placement. I mean, you can see they're looking at the first grade level kindergarten. So from fall to winter, fifty percent of those kindergarten students moved or improved to placement. So, um, you know, I I think just just being in school, being with their peers, being with their teachers. Uh, Mr. Col, you you made a comment at the last board meeting, uh, about trying to be aggressive in in trying to close those achievement gaps. And, you know, I I think, uh, having conversations like this, um, you know, with some of the the professional development trainings that we had right after Christmas break, uh, I I think have been just really beneficial.
I I think that just because if you have kids that are two and three years behind, if you can identify the problem that causes them to be there and turn that around, whether it be just a little bit remedial, it might be reading, reading the test verbally to the child. I think we can get them back up, but it's it's identifying, correct, what's causing them?
So the there, the the, a very, um, useful quality of this assessment is when a teacher receives a report, it breaks it down very specifically into categories. So if it's reading it, you know, it might break it down into phonemic awareness and phonics and that specific skill set. So then that teacher can look directly at that student to say, okay, well, this student is proficient in these two categories, but in this, this student's really struggling in phonics or phonemic awareness or comprehension perhaps or vocabulary. And then they can target their remedial instruction specifically on that that key area, or maybe it's two or three key areas. But this program provides teachers specific activities that they can do and provide small group instruction for those students. So the key is we want to make sure that they're still receiving standards-based grade level instruction, but we're wrapping that around and providing, you know, the additional supports as well. So this helps our teachers know exactly which students need which, need what. And then maybe it's acceleration, you know, maybe it's that, okay, this student needs acceleration. And then that's where Ms. Starla comes in with, you know, do we need to look at gifted intelligence services? How do we push them from the green, you know, onto being distinguished, you know? So not always looking at the bottom, but also how do we push the middle on and and progress them farther?
And then also one of the selling points of of the iReady program, which I I'll be honest, I'm I'm becoming just more and more of a believer, is that for each child, it offers a personalized instruction. And so you all probably heard about your kids, talk about getting their iReady minutes in and and making sure that they're passing their lessons at a high percentage. So it doesn't matter if it's, you know, you know, I I'm going to have my pathway to proficiency and grade level. Now, my my pathway may be a little bit lower than yours, Mr. Col, but the goal there is. So it may take me a little bit longer to get there, but if, again, if we're consistent and and we're just, you know, keeping an eye, uh, on on our students and, you know, I I feel like that, uh, you know, we can get there.
So an observation, I have another question if I can. I think from from a high school teacher perspective, the number of students that get to high school that can't read, that can't add six and six and get twelve is is unbelievable. And so I think this is a piece to that puzzle to help us with that. Um, but I think we've just got to continue to do that because it is so hard to teach anything at high school level, Mr. Effort, Ms. Mattingly, when you get students that that can't do those things and I'm glad we're doing that. The other, this is a question, there is a perception among students and parents that that iReady, we spend a lot of time on iReady. And the value of it, I believe in the value of it, but how do we, I guess it's not a question, it's a challenge. How do we better communicate that to our kids and to our families? This does have value and we're not wasting three days of instruction on a on a diagnostic test. Because I think that's a perception that's out there.
I would agree with that. And and listen, I I commend you all because I think this right here is 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 a great step towards, uh, answering that question. And and that's having more conversations, having more data conversations out loud and and tying these programs in, uh, to our everyday curriculum. Uh, again, iReady, because right, I mean, you know, we we don't just want to stick our our students on a computer, you know, every day, all day. Um, you know, one one thing that I try to communicate with our principals, uh, from this program is that with the personalized instruction, uh, thirty to forty-nine minutes, thirty to fifty minutes a week in reading and math. And they tell you that if you spend exponential time more than that, that you're not going to see the progression. So we've really tried to kind of pull the reins, uh, on that.
And Mr. Thomas is running those reports weekly for every school and sending that out to see if, you know, is there a certain group that's spending too much time? Is there a certain group that's not spending enough time? So he's sending that to principals weekly so we can try to 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 keep, um, monitor that usage. And it's just that finding that's that, for lack of a better term, that sweet spot that is research-based, that we can say, okay, this is what you need to do. You don't need to do more. You don't need to do less. Stay right in here. And if you think about that in the 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 time that this child spends the entire week in the school, that's really not a lot.
I think in terms of your question, I think communicating that to the parent in some kind of form, hey, this six weeks or this whatever nine weeks, look what happened. This is what this is doing for your child. I think that's going to be the piece. Because I'll be honest, I did not know that last year.
Student effort on these diagnostics are is very important.
Yeah.
When I was principal, we had iReady, you know, we need them to do their best, so that we know.
See that, even they could see that. I don't know they do at school, but if a parent can.
Because that could certainly create an outlier if they're not trying their their hardest, you know, motivate, motivate, that matters. So that 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 helps us to, it's a diagnostic. When your car has an issue, take it to the shop, they put it on the computer, they diagnose that issue and that's what, you know, to get optimal performance, you know?
And maybe even, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you go. I guess my question is, so when we get those numbers and we're finding out, well, you have this many in this group and we have this many in this group, are there modifications made for those kids that are in the red?
Yeah, absolutely. So teachers and principals are leading P L C groups weekly with all of their, every teacher. So what's happening in those P L C meetings is just what we're doing, except they're looking at personalized, they're looking at students in their class. And they're working with their, the teachers within their team and their principal and maybe their interventionist. And they're saying, okay, here's my roster of twenty-two students. X number in the red, X number in the green. Okay, what are we going to do for this group? What are we doing for this group? What are we doing for this group? And then they're having those discussions weekly and coming back and continuing to monitor, okay, have we seen growth? Yes, let's keep doing that. No, okay, how are we going to modify that? So that's the discussions that are taking place every week with this, every principal and.
And iReady modifies itself, right? It customizes it.
On the personalized instruction.
Yes, to a kid, right. Yes, yes, to kids, right.
But now, our, our students, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming this, Angie, you probably have heard a lot. They are required so many minutes per week by, in order to, okay, like on the ele- okay, I think, I think what, thirty, forty minutes a week for reading?
Is that right? Yes.
What was, and then thirty, forty minutes for math?
Yes. Weekly.
Weekly, yes.
And do, not to go over fifty minutes, not to exceed fifty minutes in either set.
Yeah, but the program, uh, says.
Because they lose their incentive. Oh, I've heard all about this. They'll get recess on Friday if they don't have those, that time in.
And so this program, I mean, it, it, it is in so many districts across the state, across the country. So they have a lot of research-based numbers. And, and in looking at that, you know, they, they try to inform administrators that if you can have students in that thirty to fifty minute gap in that group, then, you know, the, the opportunities for them to reach, you know, typical growth, stretch growth is, is gonna be much higher.
And I think promoting that to the te- to the parent is important. I don't think it's well-known out there, it's just, oh, I Ready. No, that's what they hear.
Because they do it at home, I mean, they do it at school. Or my daughter does, you know? So, uh, you know, I, I could probably count one time this school year that Carabelle's opened her Chromebook at home. So, and I'm glad of that because, you know, she, it, because it's not something that they're forcing to be done at home so that time is being given. But, you know, I guess, you know, we, we talk about this, but I, it, it, my mind is completely puzzled because I personally don't see how a classroom teacher is gonna bring a child from the red to the yellow when she's got twenty or he's got twenty other students unless the resource, I, you understand what I'm saying? I think it's very, it would be very difficult because you are going to ignore some group that's in that classroom. So I know those resource teachers are very, very important, you know, the ones that you, where you pull them out. But it still blows my mind to think that, you know, I don't think that we need to fool ourselves into thinking that we're gonna get everybody up to where they're gonna be. I mean, we can only make, we can only strive to, to do the best that we can.
But I think it comes to identifying that problem that that chil- child has.
Right.
Okay, I'll give the, for instance, and this is, I'm getting on fifty years old. When I was in sixth grade, I was on a third grade reading level. They had not caught my dyslexia till I was in sixth grade. So then by the time everything was modified, I went through high school taking A Ps and O- A P and honors. But it can happen. But you have to identify the problem.
Exactly. And there's never gonna be a computer program ever anywhere that can replace the expertise of our classroom teachers. And so that's why that, you know, you all have, uh, have funded our sa- you know, helped us with our safety children, funded our academic interventionists. And just like Mr. Bishop spoke earlier, there's twenty-one adults working with that student. You know, this is a tool. I Ready is one tool in a, a big toolbox. But it's the teachers, it's the interventionist, it's, it's the instructional assistants, it's everybody pouring everything they have into those students. You know, let's identify what their learning issues are, let's identify that, target it. Continue to provide core instruction based on standards at their grade level. And, and we, you know, if we continue to do that and we're, um, very strategic about it and we're looking at student data weekly and, and really, um, analyzing it and determining what, what does each student need individually, then we're gonna see the growth.
Absolutely. I, I will say, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Oh, you go ahead.
I, I will say in the years that I've been here, um, I think that this is probably one of the better resources for you being able to follow students. I mean, I, I think this is actually something that it's, you're in a good, you're here at a good time.
I think it, I think it does a lot of things for each student at one time.
Yeah.
You get a lot of numbers to see what's going on.
Well, they seem like real numbers.
Yeah, and you see what's going on.
Ms. Angie, you know, your, your comment a while ago, you know, Ms. Marcus mentioned our professional, uh, development day we had on January the third, when, when our staff reported back, you know, for, uh, all of our elementary teachers, we, we had a, a training that focused on, on small group instruction. And so when you know that you have kids that are in various, uh, you know, areas as far as progression, just, just trying to offer them more resources and, and as far as how, how to manage, you know, uh, that environment, I.
And our school schedules, I know middle school's looking at their schedule to accommodate that more. And I'm out burning has adjusted theirs. So our schools are constantly looking at their schedules too to try to figure out the best way to do that, to provide those time for that as well.
I guess I just feel, you know, I, I feel kinda sorry for teachers because I just don't see how feasibly they can do what is expected of them. Does that make sense? I mean, I, and I, listen, I'm so appreciative, so appreciative of everything they do, but, um, you know, I, I just, I just think, I wish we had the money that we could put extra people in every classroom to help these kids. And at the elementary level, more so than anywhere, because I think that, I think it's so important to reach them at the beginning and that pushes them, you know, so.
Well, and I think these numbers speak to, to just, you know, uh, that the efforts, you know, the everyday being in the trenches, uh, that our teachers, our instructional assist- assistants, everyone in the school building, that, that hard work is paying off. Uh, because these, these, again, they, these are, these are positive numbers and, and, you know.
Were you pleased with these numbers?
Yes.
So does the baseline start at zero again this next time from winter to spring? Or will we still have some, like collective?
It will start over in fall. So this, this will start over when it's.
Okay, so we won't be another spring, uh, I Ready.
Well, we will give it at the end of the school year.
And it'll just add to compound on to the.
Yes, yes, and then we'll start over again in the fall.
Okay, that was my question. I know, it happened every.
Yeah, three times, three times a school year. So the diagnostic.
But now they do do a comparison, don't they, from spring to fall, when they retest and fall, yeah.
But the, oh, it says annual, I can hear that, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Coffee. We appreciate you. I really, I'd say you're in your position at a really good time because, I mean, you do have resources like this, you know, to, uh, to, that, it's, it's a great picture to look at.
Mr. Coffee and I had a conversation yesterday that never before have we ever been so instructional and focused on just looking specifically at each individual student and their needs and, or had the tools to enable to do that.
And the tools is, I mean, well, Ms. Mattingly used to do it, she can tell you, she probably wished she had this all them years ago. I mean, to, to be able to just look, I mean, if they changed it so much, it was changing.
Because, you know, it, it, it all starts from the top.
Sure, yes.
And, you know, we'll, we'll, uh, you'll have that trickle-down effect. So, so I appreciate her and, and her efforts in, in helping our district kinda make that transition into a, a more data-driven culture.
Uh, and, and this is not something I'm, you, I feel like you should elaborate on, but maybe before the next meeting or at the next meeting that we have, if maybe you could come and talk to us about the high school. You understand, because we don't have this type of resource at the high school, what are we doing at that level? Just, we would love to, wouldn't we? We would love to share that, great.
There you see things right now.
Yeah, we won't start, but we'll be excited to report that. Well, thank you so much. Do we have anyone else that would like to say anything for the department reports? No, no.
Oh, that's great.
Oh, okay. Um, item number eight, superintendent communication, Ms. Carrie?
Um, yes, so I think we spoke briefly before the meeting started, but the K S B A, um, annual convention is February twenty-four through the twenty-sixth. We called today and registration has not opened yet. Um, we expect that to open tomorrow or the following day. So if everyone is in an agreement that they would like to go, I will go ahead and register you and get your hotel rooms for that as soon as registration opens.
And it's back at the golf house this year.
Yes, yes. So now we won't have to walk as, as far for that. So yes, um, and the most.
We need it to walk.
The most important thing is it, it, January is board appreciation month. So you have a small gift on your, in front of you this evening just to thank you.
Thank you.
It's not nearly enough for what you do, but thank you all for your commitment to students and teachers and our, and our entire district and, and community as a whole. And it's not always easy being a board member. And, but you're appreciated and we thank you for what you do for, for our, for our entire district. Um, we do need to set a date for a special call, board meeting, um, to, to look at our, our, um, funding sources for the new middle school. Uh, Ms. Jenny, that does need to be done in January, is that correct? For the draft, to add the draft budget, okay. What does Monday, the January thirtieth, is that? Does that give you enough time if we did it on the thirtieth? Does that need, does it need to be more? Okay, okay.
What time are we looking at? Like at evening five, five-thirty?
Five, five, whatever works for you all.
What time for five-thirty?
I like that.
I can be here. I can be, um, I work in town on Mondays and Fridays, so if we wanna do five, I can do five.
What about Angie?
Angie, what about you?
This far out, I, well, this far out, I can make concessions and figure, and get it taken care of. So five's fine with me. This far out, yeah.
So January thirtieth at five o'clock?
Do they control that or watch it?
No, we're not.
No more, no more.
We also, Ms. Carrie, I'm not trying to interrupt you, but, uh, if you all would be, uh, obliged us for our February board meeting, instead of us having it on that second Tuesday, which is on Valentine's Day, um, we would, it's actually senior night at the high school. So we would like to move that board meeting to the thirteenth. Uh, it would be a special call meeting that, uh, that's all right with everyone.
Does everyone have a conflict with the thirteenth?
At five-thirty, correct, the new time?
Yes, new time, five-thirty, yeah.
If that's okay, we'll do that. And then, uh, all of you who have sweethearts, you can take them out on a date. See, we saved you all tremendous amount of trouble.
Or you can come to senior.
Or you can go to senior.
Yes. So is everyone okay with that? Okay.
Wonderful.
Okay, that's all that I have for you, Ms. Liz.
Uh, board comments, anyone have anything? Ma'am?
I think so.
Ms. Angie?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Missy?
Um, I just wanted to say, last board meeting, there was a staff member, I think it was to all of us together, um, had thanked us for voting on something and how it helped. And I just really appreciated that communication. I think it's, usually we hear like all the bad stuff, you know, or if there's something going on. But, um, if there's anything coming up that we have to vote on or anything that we did, I, I just love hearing from. And I'm sure you all would agree that, um, to get that feedback, um, from, from the staff or community.
Ms. Angie? Happy New Year. Uh, I don't have anything and I appreciate all of you very much and, uh, thank you for spending your Tuesday night with us. So with that motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Second.